November 20th, 2018 Finance Committee Meeting to Order at 6:45 PM. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of claims.
Consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of $534,187.61. Elon credit card in the amount of $1,633.65. Manual check in the amount of $30,922.68. Payroll liabilities for 11-9, 2018 in the amount of $199,468.53. For a total of $776,212.47.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the claims?
I had no questions.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Motion passes. Any other business for the committee today?
Your Honor, I believe you stated that the total was 776. Is that correct?
I think I heard 766, but I could be wrong.
So, just as a matter of clarification for the notes, it is 766,212.47. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
That's my understanding that that's the motion that passed.
Thank you.
So, let's say that that's the motion that passed. Any other business, Mr. Tolsted?
No, Your Honor.
Ms. Harris?
I have none, thank you.
All right, we're adjourned at 6:46 PM.
I now call the November 20th, 2018 Regular Meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Councilmember Hancock will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, Councilmember Bailey will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of both the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dearest Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that we are able to enjoy living in this wonderful city and this wonderful state. Please bless us in all that we do, and please bring your wisdom upon us tonight as we deliberate about the things that are best for the city of Riverton. We ask that you keep all of the members of the city safe and out of harm's way, especially our law enforcement officers, as they go about protecting us every day. We ask these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lance Cody.
Here.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Councilwoman Rebecca Schatz.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present. The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Kyle Larson from tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, declare that we do have a quorum. The Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
They moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries with my vote. Communication from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that's already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, November 6, 2018 Regular Council Meeting. Approval of the minutes, November 6, 2018 Executive Session. Approval of the minutes, November 13, 2018 Council Work Session. Approval of the minutes, November 20, 2018 Finance Committee Meeting. Approval of the Finance Committee Recommendations for November 20, 2018.
Are there any other items that require discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Tim.
The Finance Committee Recommendations are for considerations of claims to be paid in the amount of $534,187.61. Elon credit card in the amount of $1,633.65. A manual check in the amount of $30,922.68. Payroll liabilities for November 9, 2018 in the amount of $199,468.53. For a total of $766,212.47.
Thank you. Anything else?
I would abstain from the Bailey Enterprises and Lexline items on the finance report.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes.
Your Honor, as a point of order, there was no motion or second on that.
There was no motion? Consent agenda. I'm sorry.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Tim? Okay. And Mike? All right. I'm sorry, I jumped over that somehow. Okay, so, we're done discussing it, though. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion is passed. Mayor votes aye. Mayor's proclamation, Small Business Saturday. So, whereas the government of Riverton, Wyoming celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States, and are responsible for 65.9% of the new net jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas small business employs 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 90% of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has a positive impact on their community, whereas 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday say the day encourages them to shop small all year long, and whereas 73% of consumers who reportedly shop small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family, and whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independent-owned businesses was to support their community, 64%, and whereas Riverton, Wyoming supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore I, John L. Baker, Mayor of Riverton, do hereby proclaim November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So, Small Business Saturday follows Black Friday, right? Okay, the next item is Urban Systems Committee Appointment. Public Works Director, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Urban Systems Committee is a committee comprised of several citizen representatives and representatives from Fremont County and the city of Riverton. Their mission is to look at improving transportation in the city of Riverton and its adjacent areas. There was a vacancy on that committee that was made open in October. Staff advertised the vacancy and received one interested letter. The letter of interest came from Linda Burnett, and we recommend that the city council and the mayor appoint Linda Burnett to the Urban Systems Committee. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. So, the Chair would entertain a motion?
Your Honor, I would move that we approve Linda Burnett to the Urban Systems Committee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we appoint Linda Burnett to the Urban Systems Committee. Is there any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item is the General Aviation Apron Rehabilitation Project Change Order. Public Works Director?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll move through this fairly quickly. You have the information in your staff report. We're at the end of this project. It's been a very successful project. It replaced the pavement that was very old on the apron. At the end of the project, we always go through and reconcile our quantities, so this is what we call a balancing change order. From this balancing change order, we are showing an increase of $49,064.22. The significant portion of that change order or increase in quantity comes from crack mitigation. As you know, that project was an overlay, for the most part, over the existing apron, and the existing apron had extensive cracking through it. We had quantities in the project to mitigate those cracks, and we found that as we worked through the project, it was important to increase the quantity of crack mitigation to ensure that the overlay placed atop the existing pavement would last longer. If we would not have mitigated those, there would be reflective cracking that would exhibit in the new mat. The positive news is this project was broken into three schedules and funded from three different entities. Schedule one was federal and state-funded. Schedule two was state and local-funded, and then Schedule three was local-funded. The majority of this quantity overrun was in Schedule one. That means that the federal government covers 93.75% of that quantity. We cover 2.5%, and the state covers 3.75%. So while we will see a short, or a small increase, I should say, in Schedule one, the overall project performed very well. In fact, we did not see increases in Schedule two or Schedule three. So even though this balancing change order shows a positive in quantity adjustments, the overall impact on the project shows a savings to the city of $300.
So, there are budgeted funds to cover this change order. We just need to do it, again, to clean up the record, to represent the actual quantities that were placed versus those that were estimated in the bid package. I'll stand for any questions, but we recommend that the council approve this change order this time.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the change order.
Your Honor, I would move to approve Change Order One in the amount of $49,064.22 for the General Aviation Apron Rehab Project.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. The next item is a public hearing for ordinance numbers 18-015 and 18-017. Riverton Municipal Code, Title 13 Revisions. Public Works Directors, report please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you recall, last week at the work session, we had a good discussion regarding changes that staff found and are proposing for council consideration in Title 13, Chapters Four and Eight. That deals with public services, specifically the water portion of our public services. Again, I give credit to Mia Harris and Don Wilhelm for doing a lot of work on this. Following our discussion, two things were changed outside of what we had presented in the work session. The first were the addition of two definitions. One was for corporation stops and curb stops. So those additions, per your instructions, were added in. And then, maybe I'll turn the time to Mrs. Harris, who addressed the issue of down payments and fees that were brought up in the work session. Mia, would you mind?
Sure, thank you. So, it was brought up during the work session meeting that the city consider possibly changing either the overall deposit amount required for renters on properties, or that we consider changing our processes and procedures for folks that are habitually getting their water shut off on their bills. Our staff did conduct a survey of 10 other municipalities in the state, throughout the state, to identify what some of their procedures were, and the survey was attached in your council packet for review, and I would stand for any questions regarding the findings of the survey.
Council, any discussion on that? Go ahead.
Based on the information that we had received from the survey, staff would make the recommendation that we do not change, currently change any of our procedures because we are right in line with what other municipalities see, and we also do not suffer a tremendous amount of loss from folks that have their water shut off or non-payment.
Any questions for Mia? Okay. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I move that we open the public hearing regarding the proposed ordinance. Is?
Second. Is there any discussion on opening, having the public hearing on that this time? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about these two ordinances? Doesn't look like it. We're all going to talk about meat, huh? Given, Your Honor, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the public hearing is now closed. So, Consideration of Ordinance 18-05, First Reading. Riverton Municipal Code, Chapter 13-04 Billing Procedure for Public Services. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 18-015 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 18-015 on first reading, an ordinance amending Title 13 Public Services to revise Chapter 13.04 Billing Procedure for Public Services. Sections 13.04.040 Payment Arrangements, 13.04.060 Utility Deposit, 13.04.070 Service Transfer, 13.04.080 Utility Bills Sent to Renters, and 13.04.110 Base Charges for Services, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 18-015 on first reading.
So moved.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Discussion? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes on first reading. The second is Consideration of Ordinance 18-017. First reading, Riverton Municipal, Chapter 13.08 Water Service Systems. Would the city clerk please read ordinance number 18-017 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 18-017 on first reading, an ordinance amending Title 13 Public Services to revise Chapter 13.08 Water Service System. Sections 13.08.010 Definitions, 13.08.030 Promulgation of Rules and Regulations by City Administrator, 13.08.060 Trespass or Interference with Utility Property, 13.08.090 Exposure of Pipes to Frost, 13.08.170 Fees Number and Types Required, 13.08.180 Fees When Payment Required, 13.08.240 Materials Placement, 13.08.290 Approval of Replacement Services, 13.08.300 Extension to More Than One Property, 13.08.320 Purchase/Installation, etc., by City, 13.08.330 Property of City, 13.08.340 Location, 13.08.350 Repairs, 13.08.370 Monthly Reading, 13.08.380 Write of Entry to Read/Inspect/Test, etc., Failure to Allow Entry, 13.08.390 Defacing/Injuring/Bypassing, etc., 13.08.410 Computation When Meter Cannot Be Read, 13.08.480 Voluntary Discontinuation of Water Service, 13.08.510 Billing for Service, 13.08.520 Shutting Water Off for Utility Purposes, 13.08.530 Size, 13.08.600 Ownership and Warranty, 13.08.620 Water Cooling Systems, 13.08.650 Use of Supplemental Water Sources, and to Establish, 13.08.670 Cross Connections and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you.
Nailed it.
Word perfect, right?
Perfect.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 18-017 on first reading.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 18-017 on first reading. Any discussion on this ordinance? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes. Okay, the next item is Land Swap Request, 422 East Main. Community Development Directors, report please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The 422 East Main Street property was a service station until about 1983. In 1983, the property was converted to a Daisy Dry Cleaning and operated as such until 1995. The property then came onto the ownership of the Depot Foundation. In November 2010, the Depot Foundation transferred ownership to the Wyoming Modelers Park Association. Finally, in November 2011, the city of Riverton paid the Wyoming Modelers Park Association $60,000 for the property and has retained ownership since. The city also completed demolition of the existing structure at a cost of approximately Due to contaminants released from the service station, the Wyoming Department of Environmental Quality remediated the site under the Leaking Underground Storage Tank Program. Contaminants from the dry cleaning operation were remediated by the responsible party, Daisy Dry Cleaners. In November 2014, a certificate of completion was issued for the property to Daisy Dry Cleaners. The certificate indicated no additional cleanup is necessary for the contaminants. The site is in the final stages of remediation for the petroleum hydrocarbon contaminants from the service station. Mr. Scott Forrester, project manager with the Wyoming DEQ, has been contacted regarding the status of the remediation. However, we haven't been able to contact him at this time. Ms. Amanda Henry, whom is in attendance this evening, has submitted a letter of interest in acquiring the 422 East Main Street property via trade for property she owns at 120 North Fifth East. There is a map following the council memo in your packet. The following data was obtained from the Fremont County map server. The desired property, 422 East Main Street, according to the county, has a 2018 market value of $84,000 and is .32 acres in size. Property offered in trade is 120 North Fifth East. County says it has a 2018 market value of $31,910 and is .14 acres. The proposed trade appears to offer the city 2/3 less acreage, is in a less desirable location, ending with a property the city would likely have to improve, which is less than half the value of the 422 East Main Street property. However, from an economic development standpoint, the city would likely benefit in the long term from development of the property, as well as shedding liability associated with ownership of the lot. Subsequent conversations with Ms. Henry post-publication of the council packet have indicated she would not be opposed to discussing other additional options for acquisition of the property, whether that be inclusion of cash in addition to the property or simply purchasing the property outright. If council desires pursuing the land transaction, Wyoming Statute 15-1-112 provides guidance. Statute states an appraisal would need to be conducted, then a public hearing is scheduled and advertised for three weeks, with the appraisal value included. Following the public hearing, the council will take action. It is not required that the properties have an equal value, as the trade can be upon any terms the council determines best for the situation. At this time, staff is requesting direction from the council as its wishes to move forward with those details pursuant to Wyoming Statute 15-1-112. With that, I would stand for any questions you may have.
So, the Chair would entertain a motion. So the Chair would entertain a motion. I'm not, I'm not hearing the motion. Trying to think. So let's, let's, so, is there somebody here that wants? Yeah, do you want, Ms. Henry, do you want to come talk to us?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
I have a hand though, am I allowed to?
Sure, sure.
We don't, we don't bite.
This is my first city council.
You're welcome.
You'll figure it out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I'm Amanda Henry. I own Brown Sugar Coffee Roastery. I purchased Brown Sugar Coffee Roastery about a year and a half ago. I purchased this business mostly because I had frequently worked at this business for several years and not only saw the business growth potential, but I also saw the value of what this business provided for our community. I feared that it, leaving our city would be a setback for us all. I, like many other community members, cherish our beautiful city and are invested to see our city grow and flourish. If you happen to research coffee shops, you'll quickly learn the importance of coffee shops to community development. In fact, coffee shops are often the first businesses that will go into an area that cities wish to develop or expand. This is simply because coffee shops provide a networking place, a place where people gather to meet, debate, get inspiration, and learn from one another. Ideas are often born in coffee shops. After all, coffee houses played a significant role in the Enlightenment period of the seventeenth century Europe for these exact reasons. However, much more recently, environmental psychologists have thought about what these places actually mean to people. A study in two thousand six by Waxman linked coffee shops to place attachment. The length of patronage to a coffee shop was found to positively correlate with people's sense of attachment to their community. So, not only do I feel having a solid coffee shop is good for our economy, but I feel this sort of business is essential to our community growth, inspiration, and future to come. Now, I realize that our community has many open commercial buildings on the market at this time, and I know this because I have looked at all of them, some of them twice over. However, I feel it's essential that I find a location for Brown Sugar Coffee Roastery that is the center to our community. I also believe that having good visibility in a beautiful welcoming building is essential to our future growth. I firmly believe that if I take the steps in investing into something new and hospitable, that others will soon follow. With the aesthetic site plan and layout that my architectural and engineering team are developing, it will significantly improve the vibrancy of our downtown and further our community's economic development. It will be a place for both local inspirations, as well as give our visitors a positive experience of what our community has to offer. For my own business, having a larger location will provide the room for growth that I am currently seeking to further expand my business, in order to generate more revenue, generate taxes, and increase jobs. Because my business is also operated online, it brings in more money from out of the county as well as out of the state, so brings in more taxable dollars. So with that being said, I think it pertinent that my business remain downtown with Main Street frontage. So I would like to acquire four twenty-two East Main Street from the City of Riverton. I have several ideas on how to accomplish this, to make this a win-win situation for the city, but I am also open to ideas from council as well. Some of my initial ideas, land swap for my vacant lot on one twenty North Fifth East, that's the lot that sits directly behind this four twenty-two lot. There is a huge interest in this lot from others. I've been approached by a few people, so I believe that the city could quickly sell this lot to make a profit. I'm also, number two, land swap with my improving the lot as a parking lot if the city feels we need more downtown parking. I happen to have a little bit of a finger in the asphalt paving construction business with my father owning Seventy-One Construction, so I can accomplish that as well if the city feels that is what's needed. I'm also open to a land swap plus extra money for the city to improve the lot or to use those funds how they deem, how they deem suitable for their needs, or my purchase of four twenty-two East Main Street from the city without any lands, land swaps, just a simple cash deal. I thank you. Do you need me to stay up here for questions?
So we're back to that motion. Your honor, I would move that the city council recommend that staff pursue option four, which is making the four twenty-two East Main property available for purchase in whatever appropriate process that would take.
Second.
They moved and seconded. Okay, is there any additional discussion?
Your honor.
Lance?
Your honor, perhaps through Mr. Carr, just to understand from your perspective of the four options that Ms. Henry has presented, what is your opinion on the feasibility of a parking lot at one twenty North Fifth East? Does that?
Your honor. The lot is approximately point one four acres, which would not likely accommodate a great deal of parking. It's also in the best interest of the city not to acquire liabilities such as properties we need to maintain on an ongoing basis.
And a follow-up.
Lance?
Follow-up question. Do you know what the current zoning is for that one twenty North Fifth East?
Commercial.
It is commercial?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Warpinus?
Good evening, Mayor Baker, council, city staff. I'm here once again to sing the song of four twenty-two East Main. Many of you have heard it, but some may not, and so I will do my best to make it interesting. I appreciate Mr. Carr's giving some background information on it. His facts are probably closer, more accurate than mine are, but mine are based on my memory, and the older I get, the worse it gets, so. But I put some, together some notes this evening in preparation for this. Going back a long time, the property was a service station until about nineteen eighty-three. It was known as Norm's Conical. Perhaps some of you growing up around here remember Norm's Conical, I certainly do. In eighty-three to ninety-five, it was a dry cleaners that was run by Phil Lavoie. The building was in pretty rough shape even at that time, but it was still being used. From about nineteen ninety-five until about two thousand seven, the old service station at four twenty-two was an empty rundown ice floor. It was on the city council, I was on the city council from two thousand to two thousand four, being the city liaison with the chamber. After I left the council, I continued with the chamber as a member and later became the chamber president. Then in about nine, two thousand seven, I was contacted by the owner of four twenty-two, who was out of state, to see if the chamber could take the property off his hands. We were without executive director and were just in too much of a mess to even consider such a project. I referred him to the modelers park. About two thousand seven, four twenty-two is donated to the modelers park so the owner could use it as a tax write-off. The private sector was not interested in buying it due to its very toxic and contaminated state, and he needed to get rid of the liability, and so he was willing to give it to anyone willing to take it. He was, when I talked to him, he was, is there anybody in town that can help me get rid of this piece of property? He just wasn't interested in it. I took office as mayor in January of two thousand eleven. In two thousand eleven, the city paid fifty-nine thousand dollars for this property to the modelers. Then eighty-one thousand total was invested by the city for asbestos remediation and diminution, demolition of the old service station. And then in two thousand fourteen, November third, as I recall, the city received a clean bill of health on the property from the DEQ. After that, we've had many meetings on what to do with the property with many different opinions. I left office in January of two thousand fifteen, but I'm still very interested in what happens to this piece of property and the reason for my being here. When I was the mayor, we had a council meeting and we were having this basic kind of a discussion, and there was, a lot of people had ideas on what to do with it. And so, those that know me know that I like to put things in writing so you don't have to read between the lines of what I'm thinking about, and I can refer back to them. So I'll just read to you part of the information that I gave to the council at that time. So when I make reference to the council, I'm not talking about this council, I'm talking about my council at that time. So, anyway, regarding the local issue at hand with four twenty-two East Main property, I think that you all know my feelings on this issue. From what I am reading on the current attitude of the council, I would guess that if we do get the property cleaned up and get a clean bill of health from DEQ, that it would be the wishes of this council to sell that property. Just so that we are all clear, I personally feel that this would be a huge loss to our downtown area and a great loss to the community at large. This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for the city, and to throw it away does not make any sense at all to me. I understand the dynamics that is driving it, the concept of free enterprise is powerful and one that I personally subscribe to, but I am not pathological about it. I can only tell you that if this vision for our community had prevailed during our reconstruction of Main Street, and let me tell you, it was there, and I reference to people in the community, we're both strongly opposed to the planned amenities on Main Street for the very same reasons, wasted money, frivolous, we want to clean Main Street like Lander, business can't afford it, et cetera. If Lee Martinez, Councilman Martinez, had not voted to reconsider, just as Lars did with the Walmart vote, we would not have our current beautiful Main Street that we all enjoy and benefit from today. Consider taking away the median strips with our foliage, take away the colored sidewalks with the river pattern, take away the decorative luminaries, and take away the trees. That bleak vision of our Main Street is what you have left. With four twenty-two East Main, we are once again given that same choice, a beautiful enhancement for the entire community to enjoy through the development of a nice green space or a parking lot, coffee shop for free enterprise. Four twenty-two East Main Street as we know it today was the result of free enterprise. It sat there for years as a sad little tin building with contaminated ground. It was for sale on the market waiting for free enterprise to step up and do something with it. Free enterprise finally gave up on it and donated it to the modelers park with the stipulation that it could not be sold for two years so that the donor could take a tax break off, tax write-off on the donation. The modelers park, then, after much haggling, sold it to Riverton for sixty thousand, which was a windfall to them. It was only after government, working with all of our citizens' money, took it over, do we now have the chance to use it for all of the community. Suddenly now, however, free enterprise wants to step up and get back in the game, just so that we are all clear, I personally have not worked on this project for over two years, and that was at that time, it's been significantly longer than that to this date, so that we can clean it up and sell it. It served its community as a service station for years, as Norm's Conical, and then as a dry cleaners. People that travel through our town remark about how nice our community is. Riverton has only progressed to this point by local government in cooperation with its citizens, working together to make our home more than just a utilitarian place for business. It is very worrisome thought to me that if it were within the council's power, it is not, thank goodness, to make our city park into a strip mall, we would consider it as the highest and best use of that land. Our CWC college was barren sagebrush ground when I was growing up. It has only been through the cooperative efforts of government and our visionary citizens was it possible. Free enterprise has made it possible through the jobs and money it provides to our citizens, but free enterprise did not bring the concept to reality. It was only through visionaries that loved Riverton, such as Bob and Roy Peck, that it became a reality. We have that opportunity every day in our positions on the council, but we have to be willing to look at both sides of the situation. Investment in our community is not a waste of money. It is just that, an investment. People that drive through our community don't give a damn about our budget or balance sheet. They do care about what our community looks like and the amenities we have to offer. Of course, we have an obligation to be good stewards to our citizens' money and not be frivolous, but having a beautiful college, schools, parks, Main Street playgrounds are not frivolous. These are the things in our community that make it a place that we all want to live. When we have our events on Main Street this coming week, consider whether we would be better off as a community to have a place with a band playing live music in a small park with public restrooms, or to have a coffee shop with a sign on the window saying, no public restrooms. The rendering over there on the wall was one that I paid for personally, as a vision of what that piece of ground could look like, and I still hold that hope, vision, but it will certainly be up to the current council, so. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you. Ron, this, this letter or email here?
Yes.
Does that have a date? Is that, is that the date that you wrote this? Is that current right now?
No. No, that, that was.
Couple of years ago.
Like, yeah, that was like two thousand fourteen, after, and I didn't date it and I kicked myself for not, so.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
Thank you, Ron. So, we did get a, we did get a motion and a second, right?
Yes.
To look to have city staff investigate, what, option four?
Move forward on that.
Go ahead. Again, I, I think, again, this property has sat vacant for a very, very long time. I think if we've got somebody that's interested in buying it and developing it and putting a business on it, I think it would be a positive thing for the city budgetary-wise. It would be a good thing for downtown to see, you know, less just empty parking, you know, undeveloped parking lot, and, and I think it'd be a good positive improvement to downtown Main Street. Again, in our current budgetary situation, I don't see in the foreseeable future that we would have the money to develop the park, no less the additional money to continue to maintain it as a park. Again, restrooms there brings a whole new set of issues that have to be dealt with, so I, I think this probably is a very good solution for us overall.
Your honor.
Go ahead.
And I want to tag on to what Councilman Bailey is saying. With the Parks Committee that we have, that, that the council created about a year ago, we are working to develop the current parks that we have, especially City Park, which is right down the road from Main Street, where people can listen to their live music and relax as well, so I'll have to agree with Councilman Bailey that this would be really great for our city, even with the, even here when former Mayor Warpinus had said for, for all of the community to use, I think that this, what Ms., sorry, Ms. Henry is doing, what she's already done for the community with the business that she's currently in, I think it'll only provide more for the entire community.
Lance?
Your honor, in the spirit of the motion, I'm, maybe there's an opportunity for staff to, to look at options within the cons, the concept of a purchase that may to, to look at options within the concept of a purchase that maybe would include the best of both worlds. I'm wondering if there is, you know, to look at the opportunity of the 120 North 5th East, which is on the same exact block, I mean, it's 100 feet from, from the spot, it's smaller. And I guess I'm, I do want to support the concepts, or the concept of, of pocket parks in small downtown areas to not, to not lose that. I, I totally support and, which is certainly why I seconded the motion, for the concept of a vibrant business, vibrant economy. I, I think that's going to be important downtown, but I don't want us to also lose sight of, of the opportunity for some green space, even small green space in, in the downtown area that, that still has an opportunity to revitalize that, that downtown area. So maybe there's an opportunity there to, to look at both as, while still looking at a, an outright purchase, maybe there's something in there that we don't want to lose with that, with that option. But I appreciate the, the spirit in which it's being proposed is, it might be the opportunity to, to come away with both, both things.
So, let me put in my two cents. I guess philosophically, I think the property would be better off in private hands. And in a way, I don't disagree with Ron's idea that a park there would be nice. I am especially aware, when we moved here in 1975, you know, there were public restrooms in the basement of the Masonic Temple Building. And so, my, we lived out in the country 10 miles and so when my wife would come into town shopping and with a, with a few kids dragging along behind her, it was really nice, she thought, that the, the public restrooms were available so that she had someplace to go with her kids. And this is before we had Kmart and, and Walmart. And, and so it was, it was a very interesting thing for, for that to take place. And I know that there's a problem with downtown businesses at the present time. The fact that many of those buildings are pretty antiquated and to create ADA accessible restrooms in them is a major undertaking, if it could be accomplished at all. And so, I, I see that as a real advantage to making our downtown businesses more vibrant and, and usable. So I, I, I just am, so I guess, I guess, I don't know if it's, if it's, if it would come under the motion that's been already moved and seconded, but to, to give some consideration discussion that some of the value that we have in the current property could be traded for public access restrooms, that would be part of the business that would move in there and operate. So that what we wind up with is maybe a tree with a bench under it or two outside, so that we've got a little space in front of that building that would be usable for, for, I guess, general purpose use, that type of thing. I, I don't know what your plans look like, I don't know what your architect is going to do, I don't know any of that kind of stuff, but, but I guess what we have on the table is a motion that we're going to try to figure out a cash deal. Okay, Ms. Henry? Yeah, come on, come on up.
So, I didn't really know if we were going to get into the plans, but I do appreciate former Mayor Warpness's ideas as well. So, in my plans that I'm working with, with the architect, so we're not just going to be a coffee shop, like I'm developing the lot into having outdoor seating, it's going to be complete with shrubs and trees and we're going to green it up quite a bit because that's kind of the vision of the hospitality that we need downtown and then it helps my business as well because it draws people in. So having pockets of gardening-type areas, outdoor areas, we are actually playing with the idea of putting a small, like playground-type setup there so mothers could come, fathers can come, their children can play, they can drink coffee and converse. So in our development plan, I, I have a lot of that already.
Okay.
So if that's something that needs to be...
Thank you. Thank you. Well, okay, so, so I guess that, you think that's fair under your motion to consider the, the deal with, so, the idea is to get rid of the property, right?
I guess, Your Honor, my main thing would be, yes, that the city sells the property. I don't think I would go as far as to tell her exactly what she...
What she'd do.
Can or can't do with her building, but I like what she's talking about and I think it fits with what some of the other people have talked about and, and would be a, a welcome addition to Main Street.
Thank you, thank you. Any other discussion on this? Tim?
Just in terms, we have a couple of other kind of small parks, don't we? Like the, the City of Riverton sign that we have when you come into town, is that kind of a pocket park, so to speak, as well?
Rotary park.
Your Honor, yes. We have 12 total parks within the City of Riverton and there's, there are, one, two, three, four, five that I could think of quickly, that, and, and maybe Kyle could actually name them, I probably have to think real hard, but right up the street, I was going to put this on with Councilman Godey's talk, is right behind the depot, the restaurant depot, there's two, well, one that they're connected with, there are two right across the street, which is on Main Street as well, just right off there. So we have little pocket parks all over Riverton that, with the Parks Committee, we're trying to get people to be more aware of and utilize those and bring more things to them as well, so.
Upkeep for those, pretty, I don't know, what's the upkeep like for those?
Your Honor, the upkeep is fairly minimal. It requires water, requires mowing, requires pruning of the trees, and Councilwoman Shoss is about right on. I mean, we have short park or broad acres area, narrow park is what we call it, and we have the park from the Reach Foundation or Surtoma Park there, right here on Sunset. We have a couple rotary parks along the rails, trails. So there, there are locations around town where honestly, community organizations decided they want to beautify the town, adopt an area and, and put it into green space.
So we have a motion. Staff pursue option four, a cash deal for the property. Okay? And, and I guess we're going to take a look at some of the things as we do that. Okay? All right.
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I apologize, I guess I, I'm, do you feel like it is better for me to present an amendment to the motion to incorporate a clearer understanding that I would like to see what options there are? Or are we just talking straight cash deal, nothing more?
You can, you can make an amendment.
I guess I, I want clarification of, of the true, I mean, I know what the motion said, but what does it mean? Perhaps is the more...
So, clarify? You want to have a...
The, the, I would appreciate the person...
Mike, you say what you mean, okay? Staff can write that down, okay?
Thank you.
I think the city should pursue selling the property outright, and I don't know exactly what that procedure is, there may have to be a public notice, bidding, something along that line. Again, I don't think we can afford to say exactly what she's going to do with the property, but the plan she's exhibited to us sounds more than reasonable to me and I think it would be a good asset to the Main Street.
So, Your Honor, I, I feel it's important that we not lock ourselves into one option to, and how to do that one option, I would, I would prefer to have at, at least a couple to work from. So I would move that we per, charge staff to provide us additional options in the spirit of the conversation regarding small pocket park ideas. I, I mean, I guess I, I just don't want to get locked into one specific thing that we are told how to do that one specific thing. I would like to have options to speak to. So I would, I would make the motion that we add additional options from staff based on the conversation.
I haven't heard a second.
Are, are we talking then, just as point of order clarification here, you're wanting to explore not only option four, which is helpful to have the letter.
It is.
It is.
Option four from the letter, but you're also wanting to explore, it sounds like you're saying all four of the options in terms of a...
I would narrow it to number one, if, if, to, to look at the options for number one and number four.
Hey, Your Honor, this is Sean.
Go ahead, Sean.
So if we don't get a second for that amendment, we would vote on the original...
Yes.
Okay.
I second that motion, that, a motion to amend, I guess, the original motion.
Okay. All right. So is there any more discussion on this? We've kind of beat it to death, I think.
Your Honor, just a matter of clarification, right now what I'm hearing is that the motion, if, that the amendment to the motion, if passed, would have staff pursue step number four and number one as options for council. Is that correct?
Let me read number one, just to double check and make sure I'm correct.
Okay.
We'd have to vote on the amendment?
Yes.
That survives, if not, then...
Correct.
Okay, so, are you ready, are you ready on the amendment? Okay, so all in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
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 Those opposed to the amendment?
Aye.
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 Mayor votes aye. Okay, so the amendment fails, we're going to, we're going to work on trying to sell this piece of ground, okay? That's the motion, so, okay, so the original motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
We're all in favor. So the motion passes. So we're going to try to work something out, okay?
Okay.
All right, you show up with your checkbook, right?
[laughing].
Okay, all right. Public hearing and consideration of business-ready community grant, USDA meat processing facility, City Administrators Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Would you like to abstain from this item?
Thank you, Your Honor. As there seems to be so many people here ready to talk about the item, I will attempt to be brief. Genuine Meats of Wyoming is seeking Wyoming Business Council business-ready community support in the, in the form of a grant for approximately $1,322,729 for the development of a USDA meat processing facility. The owner and representatives from Idea Inc. that have been preparing the application are present to provide an overview and present, and general presentation on the project. As such, I will not get into the details of the project and allow them to do so. As part of this process, as part of the application process, the city must be, the city or governmental entity must be a sponsoring agency. As such, one of the requirements is a public hearing which is provided for you tonight. The purpose of the public hearing is to solicit input for and/or against the project and to answer questions associated with it. As such, the, the staff has recommended that council conduct the public hearing. The next steps will come at a future council meeting. There are no additional items, resolution to the supporter, the like, that have been prepared at this point, but those would follow. As such, we have no additional items for comment and we would stand for any questions. Individuals from, the owner and representatives from Idea Inc. are here and I would recommend that council take a look at their presentation, I know they've worked on it.
Okay. So, so I guess, so should we do a public hearing and then put these in the hearing? Or should we hear the comments first and then have the hearing?
Your Honor, I believe that my recommendation would be to do the public hearing with the items provided here as a presentation and comment. However, I know our business council representative is here also and can, if I'm off on my process, then I would solicit that, that correction.
Okay, because we're not going to, we're not going to vote on this grant or anything like that tonight to support that, correct?
No, Your Honor, you're not.
This is just a hearing.
Yes, Your Honor.
Just a hearing, okay? Let's do the, let's do it this way, okay? So, the chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Your Honor, I move that we conduct a public hearing for the purpose of considering a potential BRC grant application for the development of a USDA meat processing facility.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, we open public hearing, is there any discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. I now declare the public hearing open. Hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws and I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record, is there anyone who would like to speak?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council. My name's Kevin Kirschsnick, Executive Director, Idea Inc., and I would like to address a couple items for you. I do have a presentation if we have time to go through.
Oh yeah, absolutely, we, we are here for this.
All right, sweet, sweet. Okay, and as Administrator Tolsted said, there are several members in the audience here to help out as we go, but I wanted to give you an overview, kind of give you a precursor to what we'd be coming back to in, in a future date and also what's happening here today. So, the Business Council, Wyoming Business Council, has a program, Business-Ready Community Grants, and we'd like to discuss that today regarding Genuine Meats of Wyoming, which is a small meat processing plant, proposed small meat processing plant, USDA certified in the Riverton area. The parcel of land we're considering is up at the airport park. And what we'll do is I'll go through, give you a little bit of background on Idea Inc., some of the BRC requirements and so forth, give you a refresher on that. I'll turn the floor over to Genuine Meats of Wyoming, to Bo and his team, they'll tell you about the project, and then we'll recap with kind of some action items going forward, if that would please you, okay? So, these are the specific items, you can pull them out of the website, and the Business Council states these things specifically about the BRC grant. And they're very important points. One is that it's going to provide financing for publicly-owned infrastructure. And what that means is that the city would own the land and the building once constructed. You'd own that for five years at a minimum and after that, it could be offered for sale, but it would be owned by the city. The next one is it serves the needs of a business, and in this case, as you'll hear, it's a, it's a great fit, the program is, to provide funding to put infrastructure in place. What we're proposing is a building, a specific-use building for meat processing. Promote economic development, yes, that does that, and I'll show you a couple ways it'll provide diversification and allow us to expand our economy here in Riverton. And it has to be within a Wyoming community, so we're in luck, all right, in the middle of the state, all's good on that front. These are the building blocks, as we've talked before during some of the presentations. The key is to have a solid foundation there of leadership, civic development at the state level and the local level that supports these projects going forward. The more support we have, the more broad that is, the more we can work on tier two, which is putting the infrastructure in place. And we've done quite a bit of work there, supporting air service, et cetera. That allows us then to expand our current businesses, to help entrepreneurs, and to develop new businesses. So that's, what's happening on the economic development side. So, the BRC grant itself, we are proposing a business committed, which means it can help with the startup and, and the funding of the building for this facility. The legislature has appropriated about $38 million in 2016, '17 biennium, and they did the same thing again in the 18, '19 biennium. So basically what it means, there's about $4.5 million available on a quarterly basis and we'd like to see as much of that money as possible come to Fremont County. Then job creation is going to be the important part of that. This project, as you'll hear, will create jobs and it will diversify the economy. The other point I want to make is that the City of Riverton and Idea Inc. have done city of Riverton and Idea Inc. have done several of these BRC grants in the past, basically about $6 million worth, and that would be the Brunton Building, the Alco Building, Smart Start Daycare here in town, just to name a few. And what we're able to do with those funds is build the building to help the business out, then, as they continue to pay rent on that, money comes in, and we can use that for additional economic development, like to call it velocity of money, as it comes in, we can use it again for multiple purposes, like we've done in the past, and we'd propose the same thing with this project here. So it helps put more monies into the economic development coffers, so we can use it for multiple uses, helping additional businesses, expanding infrastructure, et cetera. And this particular one, there's another nice item that's happening. So if you look at, at the state level, the executive branch has the endowed program, which we're all well aware of. One of the major pillars in there is agriculture. If you look at the legislative branch, they passed Senate File 108, which basically provides funding for agricultural projects within, within the state. And I've highlighted the one there, the Jermaine text in yellow, which basically says, "Create small regionally-located beef processing plants inspected by the USDA." And that's exactly what we're talking about. Now, the business council is working on some refining the exact specification on what that means to them and how they want to expand things going forward, but you can see that it's supported at the state level, and hopefully you'll see that it's supported here at the local level as well. So these are the, again, the building blocks. What I'd like to do is turn it over to Genuine Meats of Wyoming, they're gonna tell you about their project, then after that, we'll open it up for, for public comments, and then at the end, I'll recap with a schedule of what we see specific to the council, if this project goes forward.
Thank you.
So at this point, I'll turn it over to Bo Sheets.
Hi there, my name is Bo Sheets with Genuine Meats of Wyoming. This is my first city council meeting, so I apologize if I inflict any damage to your parliamentary procedure, and...
They're pretty loose.
Okay, thank you. I do want to thank everyone in this room that's given their time and effort and energies to this project. There's a lot of people who's looking around, from the guys at the city answering my kind of crazy questions that I have, and I appreciate that, to Idea Inc. and Kevin, and even the business council, and many of the, the guys that know way more about ranching and cattle and beef than I do in this room. And so it is good to see, coming from a, a ranching family, see all these, these cattlemen in the room, excited about the possibilities of moving forward in Fremont County and in our state. So we'll start with just giving you a brief history of kind of where this came from. Five years ago, we looked at buying Riverton pack from Rod Baltis, and it just wasn't a good fit for us, so we, we kind of tabled that for a while. And then just the last couple of years, with Rod retiring, and with, with Bruce also retiring, it's, it's kind of been on everyone's mind, and so we, we pursued it more, looked at the information about what it would take, what Riverton, what Wyoming kind of needs, and everything keep, kept coming back to, we need more processing in Fremont County, more processing in Wyoming, and then more processing in our, in our area. Do I just click on this? Okay. Okay. You know, our, our main thing, so, so where this worked is, again, we looked at it, at buying Riverton pack here from Rod, and, and that didn't work out. So the last couple of years, we've assembled what, what I feel like is the perfect team, a local team of guys that have been in business for over 120 years, running their own businesses here in Riverton and in Fremont County. And one of our biggest things we want to do is we want to build on the legacy that Farmers Packing had, and we are fortunate to have Bruce Westlake join our team as our expert processor, and just what a legacy that, that he's had for the last 50 years, and his family's had for the last 70 years. So we are, we are so blessed just to have Bruce's expertise, and, and just what a great guy. And so he is, he's kind of the cornerstone of, of what we're using to kind of link what's been going on in Fremont County to some stuff that's going on around the country. We all know that Wyoming beef is the best, we have high-quality beef here, we have ranchers that work their tails off, we have cattle companies that, that are progressive, and, and they put science into everything they do, and, and again, they produce the highest quality beef there is, and it's sought after. And so how do we make that sought-after thing available to not only outside of our state, but even here in Riverton, even here in Fremont County? So that was kind of our first goal, is, is making that just a high commodity that's available to more people. One thing we want to do is we want to bring jobs into Riverton. We will, again, talk about the expansion here, the new jobs will be created, in the first year, we'll create seven new jobs. Again, we've been told that we're very low on our numbers, but we want to be sustainable, we want to be practical, and we want to pursue this very realistically. So we'll create seven jobs in year one, there'll be 11 in year three, 13 in year five, and we hope to have up to 20 by year eight. Again, we've been told that we're very low on some of these numbers, that we need to be kind of reaching a little higher, but we're trying to be very, very realistic and sustainable. The cost of the grant, Kevin talked about that, that grant, as you guys heard, is a grant that goes to the city, it does not go to us, we do not get any of that money. What we get is we get an ability to use a building for meat processing. So again, it's a, a grant that goes to the sponsoring agent of the city. Genuine Meats of Wyoming will actually put about $500,000 into the project of our own money, so we'll be putting money into a building that is owned by the city. The biggest components that we've had is whenever someone hears that we're looking at this project, first question they ask is it USDA inspected? That's the, the first and biggest question that we get. And, yes, we, we've got a company that's actually, that's their specialty, that they do this on a daily basis, coming up with HACCP plans and designing and catering an exact plan for our plant, that's what they do on a daily basis, and so we have a company that will do that for us. We feel that, again, whenever you talk to any of these experts in the field, the ranchers, the guys that have been around it, I haven't heard one yet say that we have too much processing, whether it's here in town, whether it's in the state, and even looking at the Front Range in Colorado, they are, they are singing the same song, that they need more custom processing. And so it's, it's a regional thing, and even up in Montana, there's quite a few custom processing plants that are full, and some of them are full indefinitely, until someone backs out of their slot, they do not have any openings. And so we see that this being a big potential for our ranchers, for our cattle companies. One, one service that we like to provide would be drive-age products, just kind of for the restaurants and for the foodies around the community, we'd like to be able to do that. A big part that our ranchers, I think, will, will enjoy, again, coming from a ranching family, I know that my dad would not be on Twitter tonight following what we're doing at the city council meeting, and so we would like to help with that. We would like to create custom labeling for each ranch, each cattle company, and that's a very doable thing. And it also helped them a little bit with social media, if they want to market their beef, their products, anywhere in the world, we will help them a little bit with that. Again, that's a goal of ours. So, so again, I didn't want to talk a lot tonight, just because there's, there's a lot of people in the audience that have more expertise and have been doing this for 50 or more years, and they know exactly kind of what we're needing in Riverton and the area. But again, we, we feel that this is, it's gonna happen in Wyoming, if you look at the legislature and what's going on and what's needed, it's gonna happen here, it's gonna happen somewhere else, it's, there's gonna be multiple plants going up in the next foreseeable future. And so, it's something that I think if we, as, as a town, as a community, can jump on this and kind of see where it's going, to fill the need, you know, I think it's a, gonna be a big, big boost to our economy, not just with the jobs it creates, but also kind of how, how the web goes out a little bit, how it helps some of our ranchers, how it helps some of our subsidiaries that also are in the beef business. Again, didn't bring my iPad, so let's see. We also have a few, we have quite a few people that we've talked to, both here in Riverton and in our state, that would have extreme interest in a USDA inspected slaughter and processing facility that they would use, because they require it. High Mountain Seasonings here in town is extremely excited about it, because they have to be USDA inspected, any of the meat that they use for all their products. Wyoming Authentic Products up in Cody also has interest. Again, it comes down to dollars and cents for, for each one of these, but they do have interest in it. We, we have a couple other entities that would have, again, high interest in what we're doing, it would just come down to, to making the dollars and cents work. Many of the ranchers that we've talked to are extremely excited about it, with the potential. So again, we are excited about it. I know that there's probably a few questions that need to be answered or asked at this point. Anything else? Again, this is my first city council meeting, so I apologize if, if we forgot anything on there.
It's okay. Counsel, anybody have any questions for Bo?
Is there anybody here that doesn't like this idea? I'm not trying to make you like, point yourself out, but I'm...
What does it actually involve? I mean, what are we putting up there for?
Sure, so we would be a, a small custom processing facility, and I did want to just kind of recognize the job that, that Hamilton's have done in Hudson, they have done an excellent job of processing and, and taking care of our community and our, and our county, and so they've done a great job. We just feel that there is quite a bit of just lost processing that needs to be done with, with Bruce and with Rod's business going, you know, with him retiring, we just felt there's a ton that's supposed to be lost through that. So what our plant looks like is we would be a small meat processing facility, we hope to do 18 head per week in the first year, and then progress up to 30 head per week within year five, and then we have capacity for 58 head per week, and we've been told that we will reach that really quickly, but again, we're trying to be very, very conservative and not, not shoot for the moon here right away, but we have potential for up to 58 head per week.
And is it, I'm, I'm curious about this, right now, when we have local ranchers, I, I mean, you're saying that there's nobody complaining about too much production, and that seems to make sense, 'cause it's my understanding, a lot of our local ranchers are actually just because of how busy local meat processing locations are, they're having to go elsewhere, is that accurate?
Yes, and to, to do any business with a USDA inspected company, you have to be USDA inspected to go out of state, you have to be USDA inspected. To market it, it's just better to have USDA inspection. Again, they can do it through state, but right now, with just the demand that we have for this, and some of our local plants were backed up three, four months, to get into the USDA inspected plants in northern Colorado, it's three years away to get anything in. And so that's, we have a couple ranchers that, that like to use USDA inspection, Wyoming Authentic Products being one of them, and again, to be on a three-year waiting list just for their custom part of it, if you're trying to get into their weekly schedule, it's, it's, it's not even gonna be able to be done right now. So again, the potential is there for, for the ranchers to, to start doing more value-added beef products, where they're marketing their own beef, they can market it outside of state. We, we also have some really cool connections with Central Wyoming College, Dr. Tindell's done a great job just doing research and coming up with a plan to kind of help with the workforce, 'cause that is another concern, where are you gonna find these employees? And I think, we, we hope to attract them just with, again, a, a good, nice-paying job in Riverton. We have a lot of hard-working people that we'd like to spotlight on our team, it's one of our main goals, is taking care of them as family. So again, that's, that's one thing that we hope to utilize from CWC, to have some interns in our plant, but also utilize some of the training that they will do.
And how many employees would you have?
We would have up to 21, to start with, I mean, if we, if we reached capacity. Another thing that we want to do is a subscription service. Growing up, a lot of us were able to go to the locker to pick up beef, and they would store it for us, so that's another part that we are going to offer, is what we call a subscription service. You've all have seen like Butcher Box and some of the delivery services that FedEx delivers to people around the county, they basically deliver a box of beef that's frozen, and we hope to kind of simulate that, but what we will offer is Wyoming beef, we will offer Fremont County beef, that they can pick up on a monthly or bi-weekly basis. And with that, we, we will spotlight some of the ranchers, you know, if, if we have a rancher that has interest in being spotlighted, they'll be able to be part of our subscription service, so people that week would pick up beef from whatever ranch is selected, and we'll promote them. That way allows kind of the normal person in Fremont County to eat local beef, because again, we know the, the quality of it, the health benefits that are associated with it, but many people are intimidating, are intimidated by trying to get a beef done, just as kind of like going the mechanic, if you don't know a lot about it, it's hard to approach a rancher, get a time slot four months from now, and then get your beef done. It's also a substantial cost right up front, and so offering, you know, a monthly service kind of cuts it down a little bit on a monthly basis.
And you'd also be, same as we've had a lot of our ranchers going elsewhere, you're hoping that we'd have ranchers coming here from outside the county then as well?
Yes, for sure, we've, we've been approached by quite a few people outside the, the community that would definitely bring us. One big rancher down in the southwestern part of the state, that was taking their stuff five hours to northern Colorado, they said if you can take a load of cattle, we'll bring it to you. But again, we're not open yet, so this is stuff that, again, I appreciate all the conversations I've had, 'cause I've had a ton of them, we've had a ton of them, in the last two years, kind of getting this project, just seeing if it's something that's viable for our area, and we've yet to find someone that's versed in, the ag community, tell us that, no, we don't have a need for that.
So, does this mean there's gonna be some corrals and feedlot operation of some kind?
You know, that's, that's been one misconception, is that we're bringing in a big, major packing plant, we are not a major packing plant, obviously, and the cattle that would be at our plant would be there for less than 24 hours, usually for a couple hours they're brought in. Bruce can speak to that, that they don't have a stench, as far as anything else other than, you know, the cattle that you have around town, but again, they will be there for a very short period of time. We will have a schedule set up to where they show up that day, at most the night before, and then there will be a certain slaughter day that they will be processed through.
Okay. Looks to me like you'll have a full schedule tomorrow.
There's a lot of great ideas out there, and some, some would definitely benefit from having, you know, more processing, because then they can explore some other ventures. So I think, like we said, there, there's gonna be a little bit of a reach to some other entities too, if we're able to offer this. They can now pursue some of their, like these guys in the front row have some really good ideas, you know, around this, but they need a, a facility. And, and that's kind of what it boils down to right now, is having processing and slaughter facilities.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience that's got any comments? Come up, please.
Steve Lynn.
Come, come to the podium, please. You don't, may not realize this, it is being televised all across the county, okay?
Great.
So...
And I don't, my name's Steve Lynn, live, live in Riverton, some of you know I work on the Federal Boulevard project. Just, will there be another forum to kind of get in the weeds on the impact to the city, environmental concerns, or will it be self-contained, that type of thing? Would there be another forum for that, or do we get in the weeds here?
Well, it sounds to me like we've got a three reading process, is that...
No, your honor.
No?
We have, you would have a resolution presented to you with supporting documentation. So there will be either on the 4th or on the 11th, currently scheduled to have another discussion on this, where council would consider such a resolution. The only thing you might discuss today is whether or not to consider advertising potential land sale associated with the desired lot, we can discuss that afterward. However, as far as the, any impacts that we would need to note, or any questions, those are items that could be presented or asked at this point, and we could find and make sure that those are answered to the best of our ability by the next, by the time that council actually considers this.
So, maybe if you have some specific questions that you'd like to at least get into the record, you might go ahead and...
Well, and mainly my concerns are what kind of a, what kind of a burden would this be to the city, as far as, as an, as a cost burden? I know you said that the grant covers the building, and the city owns the property. I simply have questions like, is the, is the, is the property gonna be self-contained to take care of the, the waste, that type of thing? to take care of the waste, that type of thing? And will there be more infrastructure needed to get water mains, that type of thing, out there? Will sewer be extended out to that? Will it have its own processing, wastewater processing onsite, that type of thing? So there's just those kinds of costs. I guess I'm just kind of walking in, just those are the questions that are coming to my mind, referring back to what kind of burden would this be on the city?
So at the present time, we have city sewer and city water to the site, right?
Your Honor, that is correct. There's an eight-inch water main and an eight-inch sewer line that's going up Airport Hill that could accommodate the site. My staff has looked at whether or not the sewer line would be appropriate in size, and based off of the preliminary projections, that eight-inch main will be sufficient for capacity. However, if these guys are so successful that they're processing more, the only impact is we'd have to upsize that line. But for now, with their projections, the utilities running up the hill that could service the site are adequate. Now, obviously, Airport Road already services truck traffic with Fremont County Road and Bridge being up there. So there will be an impact on that roadway as more usage occurs, but not to the point that it would cause the road to fail greater than the rate that it's already failing, in my opinion.
Thank you, Kyle. What about the treatment plants, booster pump stations, anything like that to meet their... to meet these guys' needs? Would that be an additional consideration?
Your Honor, I believe this is a great question. Fortunately, with the Job Corps construction and the Riverton Water Supply Project, the booster pumps are already in place to move water up that hill, and so we will not have an issue with pressure or ability to provide water in a way that will serve everybody on Airport Hill.
Very good. Very good. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You bet. You bet. And these guys are going to pay for the water, right, and the sewer? Yeah?
Your Honor, yes, they will pay for what they consume.
Yeah, okay. So then that's a revenue to the city. Okay?
I'm Bruce Westlake. And when we retired, Bo jumped on me and said, "Would you help me set up a new plant?" And I had no idea I was going to get involved in this big deal. But just kind of an overview, we have a lot of ranchers that sell meat. We were custom-only, so they had to sell the beef and then bring it for the guy. We couldn't sell it. But that was probably 40 to 50% of our business was feedlots, bringing in beef for other people. And so there is that in the county that's already set to go, and they have ready to start whenever we can get it going. And it will be, as near as I can tell, self-contained, pretty much. There'll be some small corrals for the cattle as they come in each day. And as far as smell, if you keep your plant clean, your cooler's cool, and your corrals cleaned, there will not be much of a smell. There's probably... Of course, I've been in it for 70 years, and so I probably couldn't tell you what our plant smells like. I've smelled it for so long that... But we... I say, if you keep it clean, there shouldn't be any problems. And I know we had a lot of people come into our plant and say, "Man, there's no smell around here." And so that can be done, and I'm sure Bo understands that and will be taken care of. And so I just appreciate Bo taking the horns and going, and he can drag me along, and I'll try to tell him what I know. It's going to be a learning curve for me because there's a lot of this that, being custom-only, I don't... The USDA stuff is kind of beyond me, so I'll have to learn along with everybody else. But some of the basics, I can kind of give Bo some pointers on that. And so I just kind of wanted to let you know where I come into it, and I'm just kind of to help Bo along and get this thing going because there is definitely a need. We were always booked up three to four weeks... three to four months all year long. And at one time, we were doing 20 head of beef and 20 head of hogs and still booked up. And as I got older, we cut that down. But that's... So there is the potential here for what we're planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, I'm Jason Kinsler. I'm, I guess, here in my capacity as a board member for the Wyoming Business Council. And I just felt like it was important to maybe share the kind of the state perspective on this project. You know, I've been on no less than four calls this month just about beef in Wyoming, Senate File 108. We just shipped our first batch of beef to Taiwan. We're going to be... There's a local producer in the basin that's going to be there for the Chinese New Year, eating Wyoming beef. We're working on a Wyoming brand, Wyoming branded beef, and we're considering, as a business council, passing a beef study so that we can do a beef study in the state. And I think where this all relates to us is, you know, this is the first sort of tangible product, project that I've seen. And I think that's important to note that that sort of puts us in Fremont County in a leadership role within the state in something that's very much a high priority right now. And so I think just from the economic development perspective, the visibility, all those things, I think it's really good for us as a city to consider this and sort of capitalize on it. That said, the business council gets asked for a lot of these BRC grants, and it's not unlimited funding. So it's also an opportunity for Fremont County to hopefully capitalize on that. And this seems like a great project to do that, so thanks.
Thank you. Any questions, Tim?
Jason, is there anything that the Riverton City Council can do that would, let's say, increase the chances of this very small pot of money being granted for this project?
You know, I can't say for sure, but I can tell you what works a lot around the state is, you know, the more support that projects can garner from all of the, you know, sort of the thought leaders, the stakeholders within a city, within a county, the more people that can kind of come to bat for the project when the business council does hear it, it's super beneficial just to have that insight to how it would impact the community. And it seems like it's a pretty easy thing in this case to show sort of the impact. I mean, you know, that's not a lot of jobs in some cities, but in our city, it's a lot of jobs, so yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Is there a way that we can... I know we've done it for a couple other things, that we wrote a letter of support. Can we have one drafted up and then signed by yourself that Bo can have in his packet? That way, when everything goes forward, it has the support of the city council and the mayor?
Tony?
Your Honor, the resolution you're going to pass is very much so exactly what Councilman Peterson is asking for. We can add additional documentation without much difficulty, but you have to pass a resolution of support in order to move this forward.
Okay, so in another week or two, Sean, we'll have that motion.
Okay, perfect. I think this is a great idea, and I think we should get on board as much as we can to help this.
Okay, go ahead.
My name's Tyler McCann, and I just wanted to speak as a local producer. This would open up a ton of avenues for me. I've visited both with Bo and Bruce about doing a direct-to-consumer education program. That'll also open up an internet business for me. And it would... Right now, I'm hamstrung by the fact that we don't have a USDA-inspected plant here. I'm having to take most of what I'm producing to Glen Rock because of the amount of time that I have to wait. When I have an animal that's ready, I need them to be processed now. And with the ability to get into something like this, not only can I open up an internet business to where I can do something similar to a butcher box that you see, I can start shipping to the people that come in for my class. And it opens up so many opportunities for me as a producer that I don't have right now because it's not cost-effective for me to go out of state or to try and wait in line three years to do this. I'd be able to open up an additional business that wouldn't create a whole lot more work for me, just a lot more opportunity on day one when he opens up.
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You bet.
I am Brad Tindall, President of Central Wyoming College, Mayor, council members. A lot of you know kind of what's going on with the school because you read either in the paper or County Ten. But, you know, we have a very, very big project for which we raised most of the money for, for what we're calling the Rocky Mountain Complex for Ag and Equine Sciences. And a part of that, about 3,500 square feet, is for meat slaughter and reprocessing. And so we do plan to meet the workforce piece of this. And of course, in economic development, you have the workforce, and then you have the business, and ideally they happen at the same time, and they don't kind of stagger and fail. And so in terms of the college's perspective, this is what we need. I mean, we're half of the equation, and we need the other half out there. And I think with the two together, I think we'll be positioned very nicely in the state. The way we plan to do our curriculum, because some people say, "Oh, those programs sometimes fail," well, the way we're doing our curriculum is that all ag majors will have four courses that will be meat-oriented. So basically, our lab experience will be a bloody one. So we don't really intend necessarily to have like an ag... a meat processing degree or meat processing certificate. If you're going to learn animal physiology, it's going to be the bloody way. And so when you come out, you'll basically have an embedded knowledge, embedded certificate. And so I'm not worried about numbers because all our Aggies are going to be meat Aggies. So I think we got... And this is a setup that a few other states are using. So we figure this is really, really good. And like everyone in this room probably realizes, we really need to capture that value-added piece from processing and marketing and stop just exporting product. This is, I think, a real big opportunity for us in Fremont County to really take the lead because everybody's trying to circle their wagons and position themselves because everybody kind of had this epiphany together. At the college, we've done a dozen ag forums, and many of the people in the room have been invited to various ones. And we also commissioned a study from the Economic Development Administration. And the analysis is done, and it's going to be presented in about a week, and some of you will get invites to the conclusions. But you shouldn't be surprised to hear that, yes, Fremont County is the right place, and this is the right time to do meat processing. So I think we have endorsement from economists and community development people who have studied this and said, "Yes, this makes sense." And you'll be seeing some good news from the college posted in the next couple days in terms of a news release. I don't want to preempt any big announcement, but for our part, we're half of the equation, and we need this other half. And I'm really, really excited for our future when it comes to cattle and meat processing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ron?
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Ron Warpeness, I'm certainly not a producer, but I am an individual that has a stakeholder up at the airport. I've got a piece of ground up there and whatnot. And my concern is I haven't heard in any of the presentations where this is going to be at and how large of a facility in terms of the physical footprint it will be. And so I'd like to have a little bit more knowledge in that area if I could. I would hate to wake up one morning and my new building that I have up there has a slaughterhouse next to it. So anyway, I'd just like to be aware of where this is going to happen at.
Okay. Can you guys point to it on the map, or you have it?
Your Honor, absolutely. Maybe...
You have a piece of ground?
We could do it up here. We could point it out on this map, whichever would work for the audience.
Maybe up there.
You start over there. I'll pull it up. I have it electronically.
Kevin, if you want to pull up maybe even the Fremont County map. The property in question, Mr. Warpeness, is right here. That's it. Excuse me, I'm wrong. It's right here.
And then DCI is back here.
Correct.
And so it would be in this area back here.
That's correct. It's this property here where the property line moving to the north.
And then how large piece of ground is it?
It says it right here. It's 5.88 acres. This is the location. So that's Airport Hill. You're coming up the hill. The Job Corps is on the right, kind of down in this area. So you keep going up towards the airport, and then it's that parcel that's highlighted there in the corner. And that's 5.88 acres. The facility's going to be, what, 800 square feet is what it's proposed at this time.
So a breeze, I'd buffer around it, and 5.88 acres?
Should be.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I think the question, when we go to the water and sewer, how far is that from that land?
Your Honor, water and sewer runs along Airport Road directly adjacent to the property.
So that's not a problem.
Mr. Moore, you were about to...
City Council, my name's Alan Moore. I'm president of Idea Inc. We act as the economic development entity for the city of Riverton. These agreements that we're looking at would put the legal liability for financing, property taxes, and everything else on Idea Inc. and upon Mr. Sheets and his investors. The city of Riverton would have no liability. And what I would like to do would be to maybe put this in a little package. What I have here are the Wyoming agricultural statistics for the year 2017. They have a table that's called cattle. And for 2017, in Fremont County, there were 82,000 head. And of those 82,000 head, 53,000 head were beef cows. I went and looked at the website for the Riverton livestock option, and I have a few excerpts that I would like to share with you, one of those being a quote from one of the owners or prior owners saying, "In the 1960s and early 70s, I would say half to 60% of all feeder cattle stayed right here in the valley. And now I imagine about 5% do. The local farmers used to feed, and now there are very few who do." Today, Riverton livestock primarily markets cattle with an occasional horse sale. We market roughly 100,000 cattle annually. And that includes calves, yearlings, and col cows. That's according to manager Jeff Brown. A lot of our cattle will wind up in Colorado, Kansas, Nebraska, and a few go to wheat pastures in Oklahoma. One benefit of selling cattle in Wyoming is that the quality of cattle is so superior. Now, cows are an interesting critter because they allowed the early pioneers coming into Wyoming to take things that they could not use and turn them into useful products. You and I can't eat grass and survive. We can take that grass and feed it to... We can take that grass and feed it to a cow, and the cow will survive and thrive. We can then build herds of cattle, we can eat the cattle, we can sell our hides and skins, and in that manner, we can turn the sunshine and the grass into money. That's basically what the people in this valley do. There's over a thousand farms in Fremont County. Many of them have the ability to feed cattle and to sell them. What they don't have is a ready available market because we have hindrances to the market, that being the cattle slaughter cycle and the fact that they aren't USDA inspected. The USDA inspection is the key to the gold mine because that allows our farmers and ranchers and ag community to sell to grocery stores, to sell to restaurants, to sell to state institutions, to get their cattle on the menu of local restaurants and brand them right there, as well as the internet sales and all of the other specialty products and niches that could be developed. We have the opportunity to enlist Central Wyoming College as a partner, to enlist many of those, that thousand families in the valley who have the potential to grow and feed cattle and, and help their lives get better. But what we need is some assistance from you, more testimonials from our farmers and ranchers and potential end users so that we can get this project up and running. I would note that the trip to Taiwan taken by the Wyoming representatives to sell Wyoming beef, those cows went to Colorado to be slaughtered to get a USDA stamp. We could do that here. We have a central location in the middle of the state, we have reasonable transportation, we have lots of sunshine, grass, water, and cattle. We can do that. So that's why we're asking for your endorsement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kathy Klein. A couple of years ago, the newspaper sponsored Local Fest, I think we did it a couple of years in a row, and the discussions there were, a lot of discussion about our inability to process beef. Also, a lot of discussion about the health aspects of eating locally produced foods. So both of those had quite an impression on me at the time, and I think are important. However, I'm neighbor, I live up there, and I would be very interested to see an economic impact study. I would hope that the city would consider what goes on with Airport Hill because the road is, even with the improvements, is still, especially in the wintertime, going to be rough if it's handling much in the way of trucks. And that's what I don't know, is how many trucks we're talking about. It would also be good to know what other properties were considered and what makes this the best property in Riverton for it. And I'm saying that not because I'm against that, I'd just like to know. Thanks.
Thank you. John?
John Burberry, Mayor and Council. I just want to speak in support of this. As I look at the big picture, we have a perfect storm of events that are coming together in the next year. We have expanded air service. We have this project which is going to allow us to process meat and, and the ranchers to add value, it's going to create more, more jobs. And, and there's a huge demand out there. Since Congress has canceled country of origin labeling, a lot of people are wondering where their beef comes from because they don't know. If you ship beef cattle up here from Brazil, and if it's processed in the U.S., your label that you get on the grocery store says product of USA. But people know that's not true. If we could, and these guys are talking about branding Wyoming beef, Wyoming has a great mystique outside of Wyoming. You, you just can't imagine how cool that is to most people. And, and with internet sales, just imagine someone in San Diego, or Boston, or Seattle, getting online on Wednesday, ordering some beef, having it arrive on Thursday, thaw it out on Friday, and serve it for dinner Friday night. I mean, that, that's just an incredible thing, and it allows our local beef producers to greatly expand their profit margin and still offer a great deal to the consumer. So I, I really think this could be fantastic, and with the partnership with the college and all the other people that have spoken this evening, this is just a fantastic opportunity for Riverton. And it would just be a shame if we didn't make this happen. I think we need to move heaven and earth to get this plant built.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, I'm Hurley Dawcom, and I've been feeding livestock for quite a while. I feed mostly lambs, and I haven't heard anybody say anything about a lamb chop in there tonight. But I know where you can get one. There was a time when I was marketing close to fifty fat critters a year. Then the economy turned down and things slowed down, but it's really a struggle. I'm really excited that something may happen. God bless Jared, he's buried over there till he can't see over the edge. I have to make appointments six months in advance. I can cancel one, but adding one is really hard. But this is a need that's been here for some time. As Bruce grew older, I had to take him the critters before they got too big because he couldn't handle them. But now he's quit altogether. He wanted one last spring, so I got that for him, and I think Mr. McCann helped him butcher the thing, so. But this is something that is, is really needed, it really is. I just hope we can get the financing worked out. As long as it took you guys to give Amanda an answer, I'm a little scary about whether, how connected we are at the hip. Bless her heart, I know Amanda. Thank you.
You bet. Thanks, Hurley.
Hurley's why I had to retire, he kept bringing too big stuff.
Your Honor, Members of the Council, my name is Mick Pryor. I am a resident of Fremont County, I work here in Riverton. I, I also serve in the capacity as the treasurer for the Chamber of Commerce. And while I cannot speak to the chamber officially, what I will say is that a year ago, we did a retreat concerning economic development in Riverton and what, what segments of the economy we wanted to focus in on and promote. And agriculture came up as the top item. And one thing I will remind you, and I think, I think it's been, the theme is, has been threaded throughout, but I think it's important to remind you on why something like this is important and why Riverton should be the first mover. And that's ultimately, Riverton has been the benefactor of a lot of different industries over the last several decades. We produce, we produced a lot of uranium in the 70s and 80s. We produce oil and gas up to this day. We create wonderful animals that are slaughtered and enjoyed by people all over this country and elsewhere. The problem is, we've never been able to stick a made in Riverton or near Riverton on a bar of uranium or a rod of uranium. We can't stamp our natural gas and our oil that, on the barrel. It's not anything we can do. And as a result, we're stuck in a commodity. And that means that anybody who takes a heifer to the, the yard over here to be put up for auction is entirely at the will of the market and doesn't have any, any sort of self, for lack of a better term, there is no real direction or control that these folks can deliver to the broader market as far as turning a commodity into a specialty product. And realistically, everything that, that has been said up till now is delivering on that idea. And as an extraction state, we have to get out of the business of being just riding commodities because it, we see it every year in Riverton. We're either in a bust, or we're on the top end, or, you know, or coming out of a boom. And so realistically, if we can start to level out the, the production and the economic creation of value that, that goes on here, the, the smoother the ride will be for all of us, not just those who are marketing those products, but those of us, like myself, who service those folks in a, in my case, in a financial services capacity. But it, it also relates to those who serve coffee, to the restaurateurs, to the hotel operators, to the retailers in our area. And so what I will, I will tell you is that in all likelihood, you will likely, I'm going to ensure that it is on our next agenda at the, the Chamber of Commerce to, to debate an endorsement to attach to, you know, your future motions on, on this particular project. But I would encourage you, as a private citizen, to strongly consider it and endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So Bo, I, I have a, just a curious question, okay?
Okay.
All right, so you're going to do beef?
Correct.
Are you going to, you're not going to process any of your Hurley sheep though, huh?
That's a difficult question. We, we want to focus on beef. Now, we've, we've looked at obviously adding a day or two here or there for pork and lambs as well.
I see, okay.
Our, our primary focus is on beef.
Because I do buy some lamb.
Just to address the, the location, and the city guys can talk more about that, but it comes down to a zoning issue and size issue. So this isn't the only location we looked at, but again, it comes down to the, these guys that are much smarter than I as far as how, how the zoning works and what we can and can't do. Because I had some, some brilliant ideas that I thought, and then we went in and they're, they weren't zoned, you know, correctly, and, and for good reason. People don't want, you know, certain businesses in their backyard. So yeah, it, it came down to a zoning and a size issue for us.
Okay.
And water mitigation was the biggest part.
Okay. And then my other curious question is, when we say USDA inspected, that tells me that there's a guy standing there inspecting.
Yes, correct.
Okay, but he's not your employee, correct?
No, the, the beauty of it is, it's federally funded, and so up to forty hours per week the, the federal government pays for. One person that you guys are all well aware of, Kelly Lockhart, that grew up here and lives over in Jackson, now they have a USDA inspected facility. And the sole reason for this was they could not get enough state inspection days, so they went to USDA inspected. And, and they're, they're a small plant because they, they kind of do from, from when they hit the ground to when they hit your table. They do, they're kind of a vertical cattle company where they do everything. But you know, his, his opinion is the, the federal government in this case is actually easier to work with. So again, that's not my opinion, that's, that's coming from Kelly Lockhart. He's got one of the few USDA inspected facilities. Now, we do have a couple. We actually have a USDA inspected facility here in town. High Mountain Seasonings has a USDA inspector in, in their plant, and so the guys here could probably tell you more about that than I could. But again, yeah, it's, it's a federally paid job. If you go overtime, then it's, it's fairly expensive to keep them around.
So you, you'll, you'll have to be an eight to five outfit, huh?
Correct, unless you want to pay for the overtime. Yeah.
Okay. All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody that wants to talk has talked. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? I now declare the public hearing to be closed. Okay, so now Tony, on my script here, there's a spot that says we'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, one of the items that, and I believe Councilman Hancock asked the question, what can you do to, I mean, to help move the process along? The, the piece of property that you see up there is a city-owned piece of property. In order to go, in order to expedite the process and try to get further along in our application material and to put together a full packet for the, for the review of Business Council staff, it may, it would probably be in our best interest to entertain a motion to go through the disposal of process, disposal of property process that we discussed earlier, which is 151112, and allow advertisement for the, for the disposal of land. Those same processes are in place, to my understanding, for both any lease that would happen as well as any, any property sale. So we would still own the land like we talked about, but there are lease requirements that I'm, that I'm told we need to do. And as such, if we wanted to move forward, directing us to something general in terms of directing us to move that process forward would help us.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I would make such a motion.
It was really clear, sorry.
You know what you're trying to do, and I don't want to try to restate it. But I mean, I mean, I understand the gist of what you're trying to say, so.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded that we provide staff with minute action of support to proceed with the, the legal work necessary in order to accomplish this USDA facility on city property. Did I say that?
Much better than it, Your Honor.
Okay, pretty close. Okay, so if you can, you got that written down, moved and seconded, is that close enough?
Yes.
Okay, any, any discussion on that, Council?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I just want a little bit of clarification here. It looks like the grant application is going to be submitted on the first with contingencies. We're not getting the resolution in until December 4th or 11th?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
That is, that is correct. We have, we have been in discussion with staff, and we are allowed to submit that resolution on the 4th or the 11th.
Is there any, I mean, is there any reason to have to have that out right away, or could it wait until later, or?
Yes, the application can come in when the resolutions are...
The only reason I ask is it just seems like it makes sense to send it all rather than having it with a contingency and, and have us come and, and do a resolution later. I, I don't know.
Okay.
I'm Rebecca Breenemaster, I'm the Regional Director for the Business Council. And because this would be a business committed grant, we aren't as, the deadlines can be moved some, so therefore, where typically grants do need to come in on December 1st, we can allow this one to come in a couple of weeks after, once you have everything put together.
Mm-hmm.
So I would, I would, that would be fine for you guys to wait to submit the application until your resolution is approved.
Does that change our chances at all?
No. No, it wouldn't be heard until March, and the staff is aware of this.
I just wouldn't want to do that if it were going to be damaging things.
It won't be.
It seems like if it, if, if we can get a resolution together and get it so it's all submitted together, that would make a lot more sense.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
Okay. I can read dates.
Okay. So, so motion on the floor to empower staff to take action on this, to move, to move this forward, deal with the, deal with the problems that we still face. We don't have, we don't actually have an application, right, yet. We've got a few things more to do. Okay, we're going to work on that, all right? Okay. So that turns out to be almost the same kind of a motion that we had with the coffee shop. Okay? We empowered the staff to work on this, okay? And come up with something that we could, we could sign, okay? So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Mayor votes aye. And that motion passes. So tell me who said it first. Lance?
Yeah.
And then Tim.
Tim.
All right, good, thank you. All right, the next item of business is consideration of memorandum of understanding with Fremont County for the Cooper Road Study. Goodbye, guys, thanks for coming tonight. Oh, no, we still got a few guys left behind. Oh, no, we still got a few guys left behind. Well, let's try to resume here. Consideration of memorandum of understanding with Fremont County for Cooper Road Study. Public Works Director, please.
Yes, your honor, and I can tell that I can clear a room very effectively and efficiently. The memorandum of understanding coming before you is for study for Cooper Road, specifically to connect Webbwood and Cooper. This is initiative coming from the Urban Systems Group. Fremont County will administer this project. A consultant has already been selected. This memorandum of understanding specifically addresses how we will pay our portion to Fremont County. There is an 80/20 grant from the state of Wyoming for this study. We're gonna cover 10% of the grant, and the MOU addresses how we'll be delivering the monies to Fremont County. It's a very straightforward MOU, and I'll stand for any questions, should you have any.
Okay. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with Fremont County for Cooper Road Study. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
Your honor.
Go ahead.
Is the cost involved in this already in this year's budget, or is it a pending future cost? If you could just clarify that.
Your honor, thank you, great question. There is $6,500 in the current budget, and the total maximum in the MOU is $6,250. So we do have appropriate funds currently to cover our obligation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. That motion passes. Forest project updates and future projects. Public Work Directors, report, please.
Thank you, your honor. If you don't mind, I'll come to the podium.
Go ahead.
Your honor, I just want to briefly take a moment and highlight the construction that was completed this year, and talk about the upcoming construction out of our 1% fund. This is a great fund that our citizens have enabled, and I think we've been able to put it to great use. So again, I know we're late, so I'll run through this really quickly, but I think it's important for you to see how we've used the monies to benefit our community. So, penny power, what does that mean? By vote of the people in 2012, the 1% committee, or the 1% fund, was applied for road projects. It was re-voted and re-approved in 2016. Excuse me. And what does that do? So for every dollar spent in sales tax, 1% goes towards this initiative. It goes to the state and then is reallocated to us by population. As you can see, we get 26.5% back from this optional tax. How is the money used? Very specifically, it's used for the purpose of infrastructure projects related to streets, roads, bridges, water, and sewer utilities. And I'm happy to say, with the help of the 1% committee, we do that, and we make a significant impact with that specific verbiage. So, that's what the 1% penny power does. What does it do for us locally? From 2012 to 2016, the first allocated funds, you see in this highlighted map, this is the area, these are the areas of Riverton that were impacted. The color-coded lines there represent different years, green, red, yellow, those all represent different years. But you can see, those first four years, we made a significant impact in our town, all across the town. Moving into this next round, so this is what we've done already, and what we're going to be proposing moving forward. The blue was done in 2017, the red was just completed this year, and yellow is what's being proposed for the upcoming year. Again, as you can see, significant improvements are being made because of this tax, positive improvements. So let's talk more specifically about 2018. I love this time of year. Usually, you smell a little bit of asphalt in the air, and that's because projects are getting done, and it means improvements are being made, and I like that. I used to hate the smell of asphalt, actually, but I love it now, because what it means is stuff's getting done. Projects completed, Big Wyoming Resurfacing, East Fremont Waterline Project, East Logan Resurfacing, East Pershing Concrete, and then we also participated significantly in the stormwater cost for North Federal. Excluding what we did for the North Federal Project, almost $2.5 million this year was put in the ground and on our streets. I don't know if our community really knows that. That's a lot of money. I always tell our 1% committee, you're on the best committee. Why? Because you have money. You get a plan, and you're gonna make a direct impact. $2.5 million. Without this fund, our roads would not be well-maintained. We'd fall further and further behind in our maintenance. Because of it, you saw the maps, we're making progress, and our roads are getting better. So specifically, Big Wyoming, 71 Construction did a great job in that area. What was the purpose? We had poor asphalt. This rated one of the poorest neighborhoods in a PCI, Pavement Condition Index. So we went out there and spent nearly a million dollars to improve it. ADA ramp improvements, curb and gutter improvements, and pavement improvements. Just a couple photos, this is curb and gutter before, this is asphalt before. It's hard to tell, but you'll notice significant cracking there, and some of the improvements. Next project, East Fremont. East Fremont had significant water issues. We had numerous water breaks over just a four-to-five-year period, we had over 10. So we were cutting the road frequently, we were getting people out of service frequently, so what did we do? With the help of the 1% funds, we replaced the water line and replaced the surface. Viper Underground was the main contractor, and $735,000 was spent on that road. Just some interesting photos. And again, I'm gonna move through this pretty quick, because I know we've been here for a significant amount of time tonight. East Logan, another area of our city that had a poor PCI, and more importantly, we had very bad concrete in that area. The ASR issues in the East Logan subdivision were significant. So what was the purpose? Fix the concrete as best as possible, improve the roadway for the residents. Dave's Asphalt, another local company, was the main contractor on that, and we spent $626,000 in that neighborhood alone. And a couple photos that show the finished product on the top left, some of the concrete, and some of the patching. East Pershing. This project kind of picked off, picked up from a previous project of improving ADA ramps on East Pershing. Dave's Asphalt, again, was the contractor on that. $209,000 was spent improving access for our community members. And no, that's not me in the shadow. North Federal Boulevard, we all know this project. What an important project for our community. What an important project for the businesses along that corridor. I know it's an inconvenience to have that reconstruction going, but how nice, for the next 30 years, that that corridor, which sees 20,000 cars a day, are gonna be able to move in and out of those businesses. That's why people want to be on those corridors. Visibility, access, inconvenience. That project is critical for our community. So, in partnering with YDOT, you know we're doing water and sewer, but with the help of the 1% funds, we carved away a few years ago, a million dollars to help with the stormwater project. Steve was here with DRM, wonderful employee with DRM, does a great job managing the project, and SNS Builders, I can't speak highly enough of them and the work they've done on that job. Specifically, the stormwater near Webbwood is going in right now. If you go by there, it's pretty cool. Big trench, big pipe, you'll see some crossings coming up here soon, and coming up in the future, you'll see a detention facility. No, not a jail, but a stormwater detention facility to handle water and reduce flooding in that area of town. And by the way, that happens almost yearly. We've seen the intersection of Webbwood and North Federal, when it backs up with water. I know the PD deal with it. So, project planning is gonna help alleviate that flooding, and then, more importantly, the residents who live east on Webbwood, they deal with that flooding all the time, and these projects are gonna help significantly with that. So how about that for a quick run-through of the impact that was made this year? I get passionate about it, I get excited about it, and it's because this is where money hits the road and progress is made for our community. That's why people voted it in, and I'm grateful for the 1% committee, I'm grateful for the council, and my staff, MEA, I mean, everybody that participates in these projects do a great job to make sure we get bang for the buck in value. All right, so, let's talk about this upcoming year, just briefly. We've spent several months with our 1% committee to prioritize our next round of projects, and we need to do it now, so we can design them, get them out for bid in the spring, get them under contract and under construction early in the year, when contractors are hungry, to get good prices. So, with the help of our 1% committee, the following projects have been prioritized. Bell Street Sewer, this will be a project that will partner with your wastewater fund. Village Drive, this will be a project that will significantly improve the asphalt on Village, significantly improve the concrete on Village, and oh, by the way, we might address that weird intersection at the same time. Okay?
Mr. Strube will thank you.
Well, I hope you will. And the last one is College View. College View is like East Logan, where we have significant ASR problems. I mean, you drive College View, and you'll see plants, weeds, and other vegetation growing out of the curb. That's not supposed to happen. So we're gonna fix that. What makes a good road? A few things, but drainage, drainage, and drainage. If you can get the water off the road, into the curb, and out of the way, your road is gonna be maintained for a longer period of time. That's why we want to do the curb and gutter. College View has a good PCI, but if the curb and gutter continues to fail, we're not gonna drain that road well, and we need to take care of that. So, that's the third project prioritized by the committee. We will try and do a pavement preservation project in addition to the concrete improvements. What does that mean? Slurry seal, chip seal. That is what we're gonna do to keep a good road good. Before it deteriorates to the point that it's failing and we have to invest significant dollars, we're gonna reinvest into it, prevent oxidation, and keep that road good. The committee also prioritized two projects as alternatives. If funds are available, one was South Railroad Avenue, the other was South 8th East, and we will work on those. Staff's currently surveying them, and we'll see how bids come in for the first priority projects, and then we'll add those in, if we can, should budget allow them. The last thing I'll mention is Airport Road. That was a project prioritized number two by the Forest Committee. They didn't choose to put it on this upcoming project list because of the cost, and then also the cooperation that will have to occur between the tribes and Fremont County. That road has multiple jurisdictional issues, multiple owners, and it's gonna require significant investment. I appreciate the fact that Kathy Klein brought up the narrow road there. That's a 22-foot wide road, 11 feet for each-way traffic. There's no median, there's no shoulder, and so it can get pretty uncomfortable right now if you're passing a Fremont County truck and you're heading up or down. That road needs to be improved. I'm impressed with how long it's stayed in the condition it is. That's the original highway, as many of you know, but it needs to be invested in, it needs to be improved, and I think we can work together with our neighbors, and maybe partner the 1% committee with the Urban Systems Committee to go full circle tonight, and utilize funds to improve a corridor that's about 1.8 miles long. That's the same length of the North Federal Project, to put that into scale, okay? So with that, staff recommends that the city council direct us to move forward with the projects identified by the 1% committee, and I will let you move on. Thank you.
Kyle, the airport, that's, we're looking at that next year, then? As in, not next year, but upcoming?
2020. Your honor, I think to be realistic, it'll be a few years. It would be great if we could get it into, not next year, but the following year's construction season, but it, we'll have to see how it plays out from a design standpoint, a budget standpoint, and then also a jurisdictional standpoint.
Just, I guess the only thing, I just don't want that to be forgotten, especially if some of the things we're talking about here could come to fruition. That road needs a lot of help, so.
Yep.
Okay.
It's gonna have so much traffic.
True. So many people flying in and out.
So do we need a motion on this?
Your honor, it's not necessary, but maybe to help Megan with the minutes, it'd be great to have a motion. Again, staff recommends that you tell us to move forward with what your 1% committee tells, has recommended.
Your honor, I would move that the city council recommend moving forward with the Forest Committee 2019 project list and working on the Forest Committee 1-cent fund.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, or, any opposed? Okay, mayor votes aye, and the motion passes, so we've approved that list for you, okay? Council committee reports, and council members roundtable?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I would be remiss, as a member of the Forest Committee, if I didn't compliment Mr. Butterfield and Don Wellhelm on the work that they're doing on the Forest Committee. It's just been outstanding, and I've just been so pleased that what we're able to get done on our roads, so thank you, Kyle.
Good, and Ron, I want to thank you for your service on that committee, because I know you keep the vision alive.
Well, Mr. Weaver and I spend a lot of time with voters, promising them that we would use it one way, and I take that very seriously, and sometimes I get a little anal about it, but anyway, that's what you have to deal with.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Okay, so council committee reports, and council member roundtable, Shota, have you got anything for us tonight?
Yes, your honor. I know that I mentioned this a couple times in the past. With the Solutions Committee, we were tasked with coming up an event for the, to bring the community together. I mentioned, we discussed the Rendezvous Games. So tonight, I wanted to bring to council, and I don't know, correct me if I'm doing this wrong, all right, Tony, but we wanted to go ahead and move forward with those events. In doing so, we would have to submit a request for liability coverage. So, if you guys have any questions on that, I'm going to be able to answer them, but would I make a motion to move forward, Tony?
Mayor and council, if I may. As we were discussing it, at some point, council, the city, is going to have to take a formal stance. If we're going to allow this and support it within, on city property, we've talked about a special event permit, because it doesn't completely fall under our existing. That is not an extreme cost, and the discussion with those costs have been that they would be offset by fundraising efforts associated with that. So there isn't, currently, there's nothing proposed as a direct monetary expenditure by the city. There may be some assistance at some point during setup or something, but it's, at some point, it would be appropriate for council to say, yes, we believe this is a good, this is a good project to move forward with, and that we support that, so we can get that moving, and we can say that we've brought that to your attention, and then we can update you accordingly as it comes forward, that moves forward.
Okay, do we have a date?
Yes, so it's gonna be a biannual event. The first date that we are going to be doing is February 2nd, 2019. This event will go from approximately 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And I have a list of the potential games that will be included as well. If you guys want me to list those off quickly. These aren't set in stone, but these are just the ideas that we came up with as a little committee or group. And it will be held at the city park.
So do we have, are we, so, I guess what we're trying to get us to is, do we need some kind of a motion to proceed with this, or are we gonna wait until you've got an actual insurance something to agree to, or?
Your honor, and I guess with regard to our exact insurance, I'd defer to our city clerk, however, this can go either way. What we, it can... clerk. However, this can go either way. What we, you can, a motion to move forward with the development of the project would be sufficient.
So moved.
If I can second, I second it. Okay, all right.
Okay, you can. So it's moved and seconded that we support the rendezvous games, right? Right? Okay. Any discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Anything else?
Yes, Your Honor. I want to report on Parks Committee. So we had a meeting yesterday, and we went over our last big park, which was JC Park, on our improvements that we want to present to council. And then towards the end of the meeting, we were starting to talk about how awesome that David Street is in Casper with their new ice skating rink and their, in their tree. So we thought we would do something for our community as well, and to bring us all together around the holidays. So, we have decided that we're going to have a tree lighting ceremony on December 8th, beginning at 6:00 PM. We're going to get everything worked out with it. We haven't announced it yet to the public, but that's what we're working on. Bringing, it's a free event. The community can come. We'll plug in the lights, and we want each different family, or child, or person that comes, to bring their own special ornament to hang on the tree. We'll have hot chocolate, free of costs, there'll be no fee for that. Hopefully get a Santa Claus there and have Cory Rhoda to volunteer to have music playing in the background, like Christmas music, just to have a little event for the community, just to bring people together. It would be located at the depot, that tree on the corner there, by the rails to trails. Maybe in the future we can do city park, but it was kind of a last-minute thing. They were like, let's do something fun. So. And then the last thing I want to talk about is, and I know it was in the weekly report last week, but I've been, it went with the Parks Committee, we're talking about doing a dog park, or who's working on a dog park. We need to get a dog park within the community. So I reached out to different sources that I thought may be working on, and actually found that the Rotary Club had already started working on it. And so, I actually met with Kathy, and Kyle was there with us, and then Krista, I forget her last name, but it was Krista Stream from Job Corps, down at the River Walk, where they've already been doing tons of improvements already down there for the community, just getting a kind of a little site survey to see what we can do. So I just want the community to know that's being worked on as well. So there's so many cool things happening within our community right now, that people are actively pursuing and making things happen. Things aren't, you know, getting pushed aside, or forgotten. I want people to know that things are happening, and it's really great things. So. But that's all I have for tonight, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
Again, Kyle did a great job of talking about what the Force Committee's been doing. Again, I can't say enough about how those guys really work very hard to make sure we're analyzing what the most important needs are for the city, and prioritizing those, and getting those out, and out for bid, and getting us some great work done. And again, we're putting money back into Riverton and improving our streets, and so I think they've done an amazingly good job, and they're very conservative, and they watch the public's funds very carefully, and don't, aren't going to spend a dime that isn't going toward the purpose that that tax was designed for. So they're very careful about that. The city ends up picking up the bill for some of these things that are not really the same in that forte of that tax. So. Also, I got to attend the Airport Committee, and again, our airport numbers are looking very good. We're up above 8,000 for the year. I think 8,200, wasn't it, Kyle? Something like that?
Your Honor, that's what we recorded last year. We hope to land about the same this upcoming year.
Yeah. So, our numbers are looking very good. Again, with all the great announcements that Denver Air Connections is improving their interline agreements, and baggage check, and all that, starting after the first of the year, that's going to be just additional help in having the airport become busier and busier as we go. So I think, I think it's a great thing, the addition of some new businesses coming to town. So, I mean, I think we've had a lot of great news in the last few weeks, and it's just a great time to be here and to see a lot of our hard work finally come to fruition. So, thank you.
Tim?
Nothing.
Nothing. Lance?
Yes, sir. In addition to attending the Solutions Committee on November 8th, I also wanted to just mention, I had the opportunity to attend, and I'm going to try to get this correct, the Bootstrap Collaborative Chance Meeting. It's a partnership with CWC, the Wyoming Business Council, several other entities, to try to encourage more economic development through entrepreneurship. And they had Jason Hawk, Jason Kinsler, and John Cox just speak briefly to try to get conversations going about how to start a business, and what some of the funding mechanisms are, some of the ideas, and just kind of get like-minded people together. And I was just kind of curious, as a council member, as to how we can encourage that entrepreneur thing. So, attended to just hear the conversations. But they're going to be having these routinely, once a month. I think it was the second Tuesday of every month. So, they'll kind of be getting the word out more and more. This was just the first one, and just wanted to get that, get that out there. So.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Tony?
Your Honor, I'll be brief. We did have a kickoff for the strategic plan, I'm sorry, the comprehensive plan today. Went over some of the documents associated with the process timeline, picked out focus groups, and, you know, who should be talked to. So, and we expect to hear more on that as time goes. We will be providing those documents in a PDF form to council for anybody who couldn't attend. So if there's any thing that anyone would like to add, or hey, you forgot to talk to this group or that group, when you look at the notes, please let us know so we can get that. It's not too late. We want as much information as we can. RECDA is next week, and Fremont County Ag Sector Strategy will be Thursday, the 29th, and I will be attending that up at CWC. We've talked a lot about ag, looking more into the development of that up at CWC. With that, I have, it's a short week, so I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Next week, for me, I'm out of town. I'll be here Monday, but Tuesday, we have to travel to Gillette for the Wyoming Air Service Enhancement Council meeting. That's the last meeting for that council, and that, the topic for discussion will be the memorandum of, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are reconvened at 9:45, and the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Lucky to get home mid-afternoon. So, all of this stuff that's stacked up on Thursday will be without me. Okay? So, hospital and all that kind of stuff. Okay. So, we've had, I thought we had a big meeting tonight, didn't we? Well, it's interesting that there's things that are starting to move. Looks like, looks like Riverton's starting to wake up. That's good. Okay. So on here, there's an executive session. Do we need an executive session, Tony? Chair would entertain a motion to convene an executive session for the purpose of personnel, considering, sorry, considering the appointment, employment, right-to-practice dismissal, complaints, charges against a public officer, professional person, or employee in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A2, and for the purpose of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A10.
Second.
Mike moved? Okay. Tim seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. We stand convened into executive session at, good heavens, 9:32. Sean, are you still there?
He texted me and said he lost his connection.
Okay. All right. Okay. So are we going to go Kristen, and Tony, and, and the rest of us? Okay? All right. And we hope to be back soon.